Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the Glendale City Council Workshop Session of March 23rd, 2021. The meeting is called to order. I will now conduct an attendance roll call. Please signify by saying present. Councilmember Aldama?
Present.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Malnar?
Present.
Councilmember Tomachah?
Here.
Councilmember Turner, I'm sure he'll be here any second. Not here yet. The Chair is here and Mayor Wires is excused. We're going to postpone item number one, but Ms. Bowers, could you introduce item two?
Council item of special interest, LED light conversion.
Vice Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. Welcome and here for today's first presentation will be presented by our Director of Field Operations, Michelle Witenco.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Council. Apologize for this, I'm just getting my notes set up. So today's presentation is a follow-up item, a council item of special interest on LED lighting. This item was introduced on February 2nd, 2019. Councilmember Tomachah asked for an LED plan for city facilities. Staff did come back to council and received consensus for this item in May 14th, 2019. And from the initial request, it did change somewhat. The deliverables for this council item of special interest were four. The first one was development of lighting standards. This development is still ongoing, but we felt it prudent to get back to council and discuss this with you. This turned out to be much more arduous and involved than we thought, so our initial review of lighting across the city has found out we have over 400 types of lights across the city, and it's not an easy conversion-type process, as every light has a different need. So a task light on your desk might be completely different to a light on a street or in a park that's required to do a coverage. So this item is still outstanding, and we'll come back to you with that item. The second one is determination and evaluation of cost and benefits and potential cost savings for conversion of lighting to LED. We'll be covering this today. Third item, evaluation of energy savings performance contracts. This one, we will also be covering today, and the phased implementation of energy savings conversion projects. This will follow based upon direction we received from council today. I do want to follow up, staff did estimate approximately 80 hours to complete this council item of special interest. This was a gross underestimate of effort. We did completely underestimate the number of lights across the city and the different demands for each, so I do apologize for the time it's taken to get back to council on this item, but there was a lot of effort that has gone into that, and I think you'll see that through this presentation. So first off, if we want to talk LED conversion and the benefits. LED lights, when you actually think of a light, when you talk about incandescent light, the old screw-in light bulbs that we have, those are a single light that provides light from that fixture. And LED are a series of multiple lights that comprise like one bulb. And so when you look at our streetlights today, or the lights at intersections, you can actually see there's approximately 100 of these tiny bulbs that make up one fixture. And so what that does, if one goes out, the entire fixture doesn't need to be replaced or the entire lamp, it still continues to provide light. And so from that, you get less maintenance with LED. The other is they have a lot less heat that they generate, they do have a much longer life. And because of the multiple light sources within each LED, there's definitely a much easier maintenance to them, as you don't have to go replace them when each individual light burns out. And the way they're, they've got a different driver with them. A lot of the older lights have a ballast, these actually have what's called a driver, so it allows you to be much more adjustable and flexible with them. So they're much more dimmable in an easier sense. The lights are also changeable, you get a better color spectrum with them, and you can adjust them such they are very close to natural light, so they can almost mimic sunlight. So with that, there's a cost savings numbers of different ways. Straight off, there's the energy usage. With the old incandescent lights or the old fluorescent-type lights, the majority of energy that was used was actually converted to heat, and so LED lights don't do that. They actually just create illumination off it, and they generate a lot less heat with it. But then there's other things that factor into the cost savings. They provide a better spread of light, because they are multiple points of light, and so you can end up using fewer fixtures. You can also go to a lower wattage to generate that same light. And then you also have to look at, when you want to generate the cost savings, you have to look at the use of the lights. How often are these lights used, and how many hours are they used? And that all figures into the cost savings. And so it's not a simple calculation as it may be, you know, if you've got an always-on light, you can, you can generate a cost savings and a factor much easily on that. And the last part I really want to make, when we were looking at the cost savings and energy usage, this was really a moving target for us, especially over this past year. We had facilities closed and then reopen, and their hours of opening changed. So to establish a baseline or determine any sort of potential for cost savings, we really had to go back a prior year and look at that as well. So this, this last year's really been a moving target for us. So throughout this presentation, when we talk about savings calculations, I want to talk about a simple payback, which is really going to be the cost of the conversion. So what's the cost of the capital or maintenance cost that goes into it, divided by the annual savings, and that'll get us a payback period. So for example, in a very simple calculation, if it costs us $12,000 to convert this room to LED lights, and we see a $4,000 savings, that would give us a three-year payback. So the reason I'm choosing to do this is it's quick and easy to use, it's very easy to understand, any investment decisions we make are very simple to do, but some things, it is, it is limiting. It does not take into account any savings we receive after that payback period. So in this example here, if we're going to save $4,000 a year, we may say it'll pay back in three years, but that $4,000 in savings is going to be ongoing, so it'll outlast that, that three years. And it also does not account for that time value of money. So if it costs us $12,000 today and we defer it, it could potentially cost us, you know, $15,000 or $20,000 in the future. So that, that, there's a value to spending money today. The other thing we did not look at is lifecycle cost savings or maintenance savings. So what this means is you, you look at, how many times do you have to replace that light or that fixture over its, its life? And so if we look at some of our typical halogen lights across the city today, they might have a half-year life. So if those are used on a regular basis, eight hours a day, we have to go replace them every six months. Where some of the other bulbs, the fluorescent bulbs, based upon their, their life usage could be up to 4.3 years. With LED, that life goes up to 10 to 20 years, again, based upon the hours per day or per year that we're using it. So what we haven't factored into any of these savings that I'm going to talk to you about today, is that maintenance saving, that cost of sending that technician out to the building to go fix that light bulb and replace it, and that cost that light bulb, that's not been factored in. And the reason we've chose to do this is that what we're going to provide you today is a conservative number that's achievable and that we, we know is a minimum value. So again, the time to change, we look at, you know, if you look at that number of half a year to 4.3 years, it could be anywhere, you know, up to five times the current frequency. So if you look at, you know, the cost of having that staff go out there, that, that could be significant as well. But it also makes staff available for other preventative maintenance-type activities. And then there's the purchase price of the bulb. So I just wanted to make sure you, you saw this, so when we talk about the simple payback, that it is a very conservative estimate, and it is easily achievable, because we want to say, when we want to recommend a project, that these savings are real.
Councilmember Clark?
I don't, yeah, now I'm on. What is the cost of an LED light bulb compared to a fluorescent? And, and I know there are all different types of fluorescents, all different types of LEDs, but generally, does it cost two times more than a fluorescent bulb, or what? Can you give me some idea?
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Clark? I don't have that information readily available. I think later on, when we get into some of the examples, when I can actually get into, this bulb today costs this much, and this one in the future costs this much. I don't have it for the fluorescent, because we don't, or sorry, for the incandescent, we don't have many of them, and fluorescent, we also don't have many of them across the city. But let me see if I can answer your question later on, and if not, let me get back to you with that, okay?
Because while we're saving manpower, in the number of times we have to change a light bulb, if, if the light costs four or five times what, what a fluorescent does, I think that has to be factored in as to what the real cost savings is.
Vice Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, an excellent point, and we have factored that in. We've factored in the cost of the replacement, and you'll see when we talk about other things, if it's a 20-year payback, and there's things in there that have to be replaced at 10 years, we've got that factored into it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, so again, throughout this presentation, I'll be using just simple payback, and again, it is, it is very conservative in the estimates. When we talk about office buildings, because I know we did LED conversion on streetlights, we looked at just an industry utilization standard of 2,300 hours, and we did this really because this last year's been that moving target for us, and we, we just have not been able to get a good number of hours. And when we looked at our city buildings, this was a, a good conservative estimate. Some of our buildings are open much longer than that. And I, I believe this item may have come up because our streetlights, we did an LED conversion on those. So for reference, our streetlights do operate 4,380 hours annually, and so the, the number of hours you run streetlights, that being almost double, your, your payback period should be almost double what it is in buildings. And so as a reminder, in 2017, at council request, we did a contract to replace all the streetlights, that was just under $5 million. The energy savings projected on that were just under $500,000, and they looked at maintenance and supplies annually being about $180,000. I, I did ask our Transportation Department for, for an update on that, and the contract came in as stated, the APS did provide two rebates totaling $504,000, so in today's presentation, we won't be talking rebates. Those are kind of hit or miss, and we, we will always be seeking rebates, we just don't know if, if they will be available.
Michelle, one second. Councilmember Tomachah?
I have to interrupt her, but could you, you said something about the difference between the savings on streetlights and on lighting in our buildings, is that, what did you, I just want you to re-say that, make sure I understood that.
Okay, so Vice Mayor, Councilmember Tomachah, absolutely. So to go back a bit, our buildings were estimated in using them approximately 2,300 hours annually. That's the number of hours the, the lights would be on in the buildings. And so streetlights are on more than that, they're on 4,380 hours a year. And so our streetlight paybacking should be about half of what it is for buildings. So if buildings are going to be eight years, streetlights are before, because the lights are used more often on streets than they are in buildings. And so your payback period really is tied to the usage amount, okay? So I, I do want to go back, and when we look at the actual energy savings, it was projected on the streetlights, again, at just under $500,000. Transportation is actually seeing the savings at just under $800,000 for last fiscal year. So... So they were conservative, were being conservative in our estimate today, and the payback on these conversions to LED is real. They had estimated the payback at approximately nine and a half years when they presented this item to council. They're now seeing it just under six years, it'll pay for itself.
Councilmember Tomaszow?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So in your analysis, did you include outdoor, other outdoor lighting that the city has in this part of this conversion conversation? For example, parks and parking lots and other places where we have outdoor lighting?
Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Tomaszow, yes, we did. And we will cover all the different options that we have here shortly.
Okay, thank you.
So that just kind of covers, you know, what LED lights are and the benefits of the conversion. I really want to tie it together and before we get there, just talk a little bit about energy savings performance contracts and what these are. So an energy savings performance contract is when you look at everything holistically. You can look at a building, you can look at its associated parking lot, or in the event of a park, you can look at the amenities within the park, the restrooms, any sport cord or lighting that you may have, the parking lot, and all associated electrical with that. And what you do with these is it's a turnkey-type service. So the contractor comes in, he looks at everything you might have. So if he walked through this building, he would look at the number of lights we have, how we provide cooling and heating. They would also look at the landscape systems, the outdoor lighting. But the landscape systems in terms of water usage and opportunity to save water, because every time you turn the tap on, you know, there's a cost generated to that water. And so it's not just energy, it's also potential water savings as well. But the contractor does an initial review and then they'll come back and tell you every potential way that you could save energy in that building or in that location. They'll provide you with design and installation services and possibly ongoing maintenance. The next step after they do that initial review is to do some comprehensive energy savings programs. And during this stage, what the contractor does is they look at all those potential energy savings measures. And there's certain things that you may want to implement and others you may not want to implement. And that, you know, a good example of that is, let's say today, the city has a standard and we cool buildings to 72 degrees in the summertime. They may recommend that if we only cool them to 80 degrees in the summertime, we could save some energy and that just may not be palatable to us, so we may not choose to do that. And so we've always got the option, as we go through this, to say, that doesn't work for us and we don't want to consider that further. But it's up to the city at this stage to determine what measures to proceed with, if any. And if we choose to proceed, the next step we go into is any sort of project financing. An energy savings performance contract can be self-financing, and I'll talk about that here in a second. But then we've also got the option where we can finance this through alternative methods. And this can be a partial financing, where we add some capital funds, or it could be complete financing, where we choose to pay for it on our own. And again, this can be through any sort of variety of city funding that we want to. But the big thing on this energy savings performance contracts is that the project savings are guaranteed. And what I mean by this is they are put in the contract and we have independent auditors monitor this on an ongoing basis and audit to confirm it. And so your contract will say, this project will save you, for example, $200,000 annually. If it only saves you $195,000, the contractor pulls that $5,000 from their profit and the city does not pay them that amount. So it is a true guarantee on savings. And what the city has to do, though, is we have to maintain those hours of operation. So if we say today, the Civic Center operates 2,300 hours annually and we do this building, and this building is part of the project, and then we change its use and it's now operated 4,000 hours a year, that's a change in use and the city would be responsible for those change in hours of operations. Same with that temperature set point that I just talked about. Let's say we currently only cool to 80 degrees and we choose 72 is much more reasonable, that would be on the city to pay for that change.
Vice Mayor?
Member Clark?
That sounds very nice, that if the savings is under what is guaranteed, we get made whole. What happens if the savings overperforms? Do we have to split it with the contractor or does the city reap the reward of overperformance?
Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, if we overperform, and we are being a little bit conservative, that money is the city's, and it can be put into savings or really what it is, is it's, you don't spend that amount in your electric contract. So they tend to be conservative to make sure they can hit these numbers, and anything above that is the city's to save. This energy savings performance contracts is part of the Arizona revised statutes. It is legally allowed in Arizona and is heavily regulated to make sure that these savings are guaranteed, which is why the companies we work with are, you know, so able to offer the guarantee as it is regulated that way. So how the energy savings performance contract works is, the first bar there, the orange bar, talks about, it would essentially be today, and you'll see our annual utility and operational costs. And I want you to consider this to be our utility costs only, because we are not factoring in operational costs to it. And it does show a box on the top being the potential savings. If we go through this project, what they identify is that potential savings, and they determine what amount they would actually guarantee as annually guaranteed savings. And then during the period, you want to finance this. So if we say our project payback is 10 years, we would finance this over 10 years, and how we would do it is a portion of that annual utility cost, we continue to pay to the utility. But that difference, the difference in the amount that we don't pay the utility but we were paying in the past, is used to finance the project. And so that's paid from our energy savings. And that last bar there shows, you know, if we have a 10-year payback project, while we spend the 10 years of utility savings to pay off the project, that savings continues. And so it doesn't end at the end of the 10 years. The city will see that on an ongoing-type basis. So essentially, it reduces your utility bill on an ongoing-type basis because you've completed these energy performance measures. So some of the conversions we looked at, or the energy conservation measures we looked at, are lighting. We looked at interior lights within a building, ramada and those type areas, as well as any sort of exterior lights. And these can be parking lot lights, they can be lights attached to the building that are used for walkways or entrances to the building. We looked at your air conditioning and heating, equipment and controls. We looked at water conservation measures, and this is the amount of water that may come out of a tap or every time you flush a toilet and the flush valves. We looked at electrical upgrades. And each of these first four measures, you know, the city, we do these today, we do these kind of incrementally. So if a light burns out in the city, we will address it in terms of, should it be converted to LED or is it just better for us to just replace that bulb-for-bulb type thing? So we've already been doing this somewhat. What we're now doing is looking at as a programmatic approach versus doing that as kind of a one-off. It's now, can we go in, make large wholesale changes and improve it? The other two measures that we'll talk a little bit about are solar. Really, we don't have a lot of solar across the city today, and we'll talk about the benefits of that. And then it's also some of these controls. The HVAC equipment and controls, if you look at those, right now, if somebody calls and says, "My office is hot," a HVAC technician from facilities typically has to go to that location and check the thermostat to make sure it's operating appropriately, and then go check the actual air conditioning system, be it a chiller or package unit, to determine what the issues are. A proper HVAC control allows a technician through their computer to look and see if it's a simple set point adjustment, if they can, you know, manipulate the controls from there and fix it. So there is that time factor that we have not factored into any of these measures. It's allowing people to be more efficient at their jobs. And if you think of this, you know, facilities do operate 24/7. And so, you know, between the hours of like 4:30 PM and 6 AM, somebody may be dispatched from their house to go fix one of these things, whereas now they could probably do it across their computers. There is, there's a lot of savings that we're not capturing when we talk about some of these projects. So to get into some of the details on these projects, we looked at, you know, interior lighting conversion. So we looked at three locations, and the way we selected these locations was we looked at locations that are not going to go under a major renovation in the future. So while we included the Foothills Library and the Main Library, we looked at their footprint is going to remain largely the same, the areas that contain books today will continue to contain books. But we did not look at locations like City Hall where we may completely change that footprint of the floor and we may change it. So when we looked at the interior lighting at Paseo Foothills and the Main Library, so today, just for example, Foothills Library has 447 fluorescent lights, sorry, 447 lights, some of which are fluorescent, some of which are compact fluorescent, some incandescent, some halogen. And what we're doing is looking at replacing those with LED light fixtures, a retrofit fixture or just a retrofit lamp. Same with the Main Library and Paseo Racket Center. So the cost of all the lighting, cost for a contractor to go do this work is $336,144. They are saying the annual energy saving off this, and again, being conservative, is just under $50,000. So the payback, the simple payback, so taking the $336,000 divided by the $49,000 is 6.7 years. So by implementing this project, it would pay for itself in under seven years. Then we looked at, you know, some of the exterior lighting, and I do know I've combined a lot of information on this slide. So we looked at a bunch of the different parks. We looked at Foothills Park, Grand Linear, Grand Canal Linear Park, Suaro Ranch Park, and then some of the community parks, Foothills Sports Park through Rose Lane. And then we looked at the parking lots. The parking lots were easier to do under the exterior-type lighting. So Paseo Racket Center, again, Foothills Library and Main Library. And we came back with a total cost of doing this project at $1 million, about $1,500,000. Annual energy savings of $125,000 and a payback of 8.3 years. And I do want to say right now that, you know, we are talking about doing a lighting retrofit at Suaro Ranch Park using Fund Balance or the AZ Cares money. This project looks at a simple light-for-light, light-for-light type replacement, assumes the poles all work, your lights all in the right place. And the other project we're looking at includes rewiring and replacing some of the poles and adding lights in other areas. So when I look at Suaro Ranch Park alone, the cost here today, out of that 1 point, just over $1 million, it's under $300,000. And the payback on that project alone is six years. And the reason I'm saying that is we can fund part of this project through the money we've got set aside for Suaro Ranch Park through the other capital project. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later on. And when we talk HVAC projects, so we're talking on this slide, Foothills Branch Library. So Foothills Library and Main Library, both of the HVAC systems in those locations are original to the building. They have not been retrofit nor replaced in the life of the building. So the plan would be with Foothills Branch Library is to replace the existing chiller and the cooling tower and then upgrade a constant speed fan. And just, and same thing with the Main Library, we'd be looking at replacing two chillers. So the conversion cost, the capital cost of these projects is just under $700,000. And if we look at it just on a straight basis, energy savings is $25,000 a year and the payback would be 28 years. If you remember back to our recent CIP conversations, there is capital money programmed. We actually have recommended money in fiscal year '22, which is next year, for Foothills Library to do this exact work on the chiller. That's $225,000. And then at Main Library, we have $455,000 for the chiller work. The actual capital project is around $1 million for the Main Library, of which $455,000 is directly applicable. So that second table shows just that. Our conversion cost, this project would take us $680,000 in the capital. The CIP recommended to council, we have $680,000 programmed in for this. And so while the annual energy savings would be about $25,000, we could pay this off immediately through that other funding mechanism and see that $25,000 of annual energy savings. And the other thing to note on these projects is that we have not factored in the rebates. If we did this project today and we said, "Let's go ahead and do that," there are, it's a small amount, but there are $3,000 in rebates available for each of these locations. So that would be an additional $6,000 that the city would see in revenue off this. We did not include that in any calculation because we don't know from day to day if that rebate opportunity is still going to be available or if grant opportunities are. But as always, we would apply for it, and if we did receive it, it would return to the city as revenue. The other projects, or some of the other types of projects we could do are water conservation. And really what the vendor does for the city here is they do a billing analysis, and so they'll find any leaks that you may have. And these could be small leaks that you wouldn't normally detect, but they'll also recommending rebuilding of flush valves, recommissioning to a low-flow toilet, and then looking at the flow of the faucet. As these did not really realize much savings to the city, and as we have staff members that do this, we would recommend that we will continue to incrementally upgrade these as maintenance, or if we are going into remodeling a location, we'll do it that way. But we're not seeing the cost savings off these type projects to help fund this, so we're not recommending we continue with these water conservation as part of this. Do you have questions? No?
Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Clark?
I just heard on the news today that the federal government is planning on a massive $4 trillion infrastructure proposal. And part of that will include green, New Deal, whatever that means. But I would think that some of these projects could be funded perhaps by next year, dependent upon the type of bill the federal government finally passes and what's included in it. Are we keeping track of that information so that we can apply where necessary to do some of these projects as part of a federal program?
Councilmember, do you have an answer? Are you done?
I would appreciate any comment available.
Okay, then Councilmember Tomaszow.
Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, I am aware of a conversation we had about a week and a half ago regarding potential future, as what came out, you know, nine, 10 years ago as part of the America Recovery Act. There was federal money available for energy conservation-type projects. We would be watching that and that would be another way to fund these type projects. And we would always be working with budget and finance on what's the best funding mechanism for these.
So are you, in the light of potential federal funding opportunities, are you recommending that all of these projects, or whatever projects council approves, be started immediately? Or are we willing to wait and give it a little bit of time and see if there is a possibility of federal funding?
Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Clark? Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, I think we'll end the presentation on what, what the next steps are and what we're recommending we do to make sure that we've got shovel-ready projects and things ready to go, whatever the funding source may be.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hugh. I'm a little confused because the council item of special interest was on an LED lighting conversion, and this seems to be sort of an endorsement for using a contractor such as McKinstry. And I know some people have had the opportunity to meet and, and understand exactly what the benefits of that type of endeavor are. I know you've met with them, Mr. Phelps has met with them, and know people there. And this is kind of, looks to me like it's pivoting into a whole nother direction of, other than what, I went back and read the council item of special interest. It was basically a plan to implement LED lighting citywide. And I, I understand the concept of combining this with a bunch of other things. It's not really what the council item of special interest was. And I'm speaking for myself, but I don't believe any of the rest of us have any, any information other than what we've been told today about how these kind of contracts benefit the city. So before we start moving in that direction, I'd like to know more about, I mean, literally, like, is this, is this better for us than saying, let's do LED lights? Let's get the contractors, let's do the LED light conversion, and then we'll do these projects, rather than saying we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, engage all these contractors that are going to handle all of this for us, basically as a one-stop-shop type of a thing. But I don't know anything about doing it that way. So I, I feel like that's where the presentation has pivoted to, is to a, I know there's other contractors, but I believe we have a, an initial contract with McKinstry for, I think, $100,000. But I don't understand the, the economics and the efficiency of doing it that way. So before we get too far down the road, I'd just like to put it out there that I think we need more information. And this has kind of pivoted completely away from, in February of 2019, what I was taught, was, what I was asking about. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, members of the council. So today, there's several things in play. We're obviously talking about the, the conversion to LED. We're also introducing the concept to the council of using performance-based contracts as one method of project delivery. The, so we're trying to get the council understanding what is involved in a contract, an energy-performance-based contract. But we'll do each project, we will analyze and come back to the council with the appropriate action based on what we feel makes the most amount of sense. And it could be everything we self-perform. It could be that we partner with, in a, in a type of contract like this, all the way to just having them do it. We're not, no decisions are being made here on the project. It's really to try to roll out the concept, because the city has not used these types of contracts, at least during my tenure here. And so we thought it would be valuable to the council to understand how these performance-based contracts work. And really, I would look at it as being, this is yet just a tool that we will have. And it could be that we continue to do LED conversion internally and funded internally. It could be we use federal grants. But it also may be that it makes sense, under certain circumstances, to come in and use a performance-based contracting method to achieve the savings sooner rather than later. So there's, this is not designed to force the discussion in one area, other, other than to really to let the council know what, how these work. And then down the road, six months from now, if Facilities comes forward with a project, they'll identify what's, what they think is the best way to convert that, because all these projects will take funding. And it may just be that we want to do a conversion project for $600,000 to convert the library. Or it might be, Facilities come back and says, we'd like to do the library, and we think doing a, an energy-based performance contract makes the most amount of sense. We would then roll it out in the staff presentation, allow council to get comfortable with it, and then ultimately, the decision will be up to the council.
Mayor, if I could respond to that?
Okay.
Thank you. So my point is, is that, at this point, I don't understand the efficiency, I haven't had the benefit of the information that you and Ms. Wantenko got from your meetings. So I'm saying, before we get to that point, I would like for somebody to walk, if nobody else is interested, that's fine. Somebody walk me through the efficiencies and the economics of doing it that way. That's all I'm saying. I understand completely that we're not making decisions today. But I don't understand the efficiencies and the economics of these performance-based contracts. So before, you guys spend six months, or however long you're going to be spending, on moving, possibly in that direction, I would like to understand that. I don't know whether the rest of the council's with me or not, but I don't know anything about doing it that way. So the decision's ultimately going to be ours. So I'd like to be enlightened there. Thank you.
Councilmember Malnar, I'm sorry, do you want to?
Again, I, we were hoping that this would be to start giving you a baseline information of how these work. Obviously, if we haven't, if we haven't hit that for all the council members, we'll be more than glad to do some additional follow-up detail. But that was really our purpose, was to start rolling out the concept and show you where the efficiencies lie by using that. So if we haven't done that, we'll certainly come back and be glad to brief you additionally.
Thank you. Because this is in response to a council item of special interest, and I didn't ask about performance-based contracts. I asked about converting LED lighting.
Councilmember Malnar.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm, I'm familiar with, with these types of contracts. I think they're very effective. Mainly, what they do for us as a city, I think, is, is they provide basically an instant relief of a problem without a lot of cash output by the city. And I think that's really what the benefit of, of this is. So I understand the concept. I've seen it before in some of my other roles. And so I, I'm very much in support of it, as far as moving forward and just having further discussions on how we can utilize these type of vendors, because I think they are a valuable source for us to use that will provide us, like, as I stated, you, you get basically an instant service with no cost by doing some of these contracts. Sometimes there is a cost, but as some of these examples showed, there's no cost to it. And to me, it makes a lot of economic sense to continue to discuss it. On the LED light aspect of the presentation, you know, I, I do believe that Councilmember Tomachov, really, this was her item. And, and we've done some great things with LEDs, and I think we need to continue to push that forward. But I would also be in favor, if there are contracts available for LED, I think we should take advantage of those. If there are contractors out there that will put in at their cost and then take the savings in, that we generate as a result of that, as their payment over a period of eight or 10 years, again, it's a win-win for the city. And I think that we should move forward and, and not delay on getting these implemented. Thank you.
It's going to be Councilmember Turner, then Aldama, then Clark.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I was confused as I was trying to do the, my studying for today's meeting, too. It was clear that the special interest item was about LED light conversion. The staff report was thin, and then the, the slideshow, the PowerPoint presentation quickly took off in a completely different direction. I think it would have been better to have separated these, dealt with the item of interest that was presented, and made the performance contracts a completely different subject that we could delve into over a number of meetings. Still a skeptic on the energy savings contracts. I think it merits a lot of looking into. So I, in part because I think that the particular industries involved can provide, on a competitive bidding basis, a lot of information to the city about where the bang for the buck is, rather than bringing in a middleman company to do that. You know, if it's, whether it's HVACs or other systems, they can predict energy savings, and they can look at, they can look at the city and just, and give us advice on where we might save the most, because they have the ability to do that, and they want to be able, along with others, to, to get the job. So that is where I'm at on that. I've learned precious little today about LED light conversion, which is what I thought we would do. So in the future, I'd like to be more clear about what being presented to the council. I mentioned it a few workshops ago, to take a look at this from the council member point of view. And I didn't, don't feel like doing it this way serves me, you know, to be able to be clear what the discussion's going to be on. Thank you.
Councilmember Valdama.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I got a couple of things to say. First, I'll speak straight to the performance contract. And so I'm at a significant advantage, just as the council member next to me here mentioned. I'm very familiar with performance contracting, extremely familiar and experienced. I also sat on a board where I approved, as part of a majority consensus, to approve some of those contracts for a board I was on. And so I, I'm very familiar with them. I know they work. They are very good. My only concern would be, and I, and I'm pretty happy to see what I read in here, except for the costs isn't here. Anytime you put a performance contract together, what is lost along the way is monitoring the savings. But you have here that you're going to monitor it through a independent auditor. My question would be, what is that cost? But I've sat on boards where you approve them, and then never, ever come back with the cost savings. So we just don't ever see that. You have that built in, happy to see that. An analogy I'll give you, or an example would be, is trading in your clunker car, that you spend tons of money on, on gas, repairs, and oil changes. Go buy a brand-new one, and you take that savings, and you make your payment, because you don't have the mechanical repairs anymore. So they do work. I've seen them work. I'm very familiar with them. So I'm very supportive in the city going forward with the building as old as these. It makes a lot of sense. I would say, continue going on that route. As far as the council member item of interest, I have been one that has not been really happy with those coming back to us at ample time. So I would be supportive of the city going, or city manager going back to the council member and redrafting the scope of work, because I think that's what's at question here for the council member is, I asked for LED, we probably scoped it out together, and then this whole different scope comes out. So I would just say to the city manager's office that just make sure that those additional scopes get back to the council member who asked for it. But I'm very supportive of this going forward. I, I could say I'm at an advantage here. And I'd like to continue today, and then continue moving forward and progress to starting such a program and projects. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm no genius when it comes to any of this stuff. I have no experience in performance contracts as Councilmember Malnar and Aldama do. So I don't, I don't have any firsthand experience of the benefit or lack thereof. I would like more information, therefore, on how a performance contract such as these would work. But I, I am not at all disturbed by expanding the scope of work to not only LED lights, but other, other means of cost savings. It makes a lot of sense to look holistically at a building and see what can be done with that building to make it more cost-efficient, because it's to our benefit and the benefit of the taxpayers in the long run. So I am not concerned about today's presentation straying in other areas. I think that was probably a prudent decision. I, I just am so confused about performance contracting, and, and would like follow up more information on that, even if it's on an individual basis. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tomachov.
Thank you. I just, I mean, I understand the, the, the scope widening, but this is a two-year-old council item of special interest, and nobody had the courtesy even to send an email saying, we're moving in this direction on your council item of special interest. You know, I mean, it's not like it just came up six months ago. It's from February of 2019 is when the council, I haven't received an email, and I, I had it up here where the last time somebody's even talked to me about this. But just, you know, I mean, I, I think it's a stretch to call this my council item of special interest at this point, anyway. That's my point. I, I asked about having a, a plan, moving forward with a plan to convert to LED light citywide. That's what I, and like I said, I understand the mission creep, and I understand the reason that it probably made sense, but you, somebody should have said, we're going to kind of pivot on your council item of special interest, and that didn't happen. So.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
So again, let's, I want to step back to what Michelle said in the beginning, is one, we had to understand that just the total scope of how many fixtures we had. We, we didn't have a database here in the city that said, we have 4,900 of these fixtures and 21,000 of these. So as they were getting into it, the, the time came, is that, one, we had to identify the type of fixtures, what their use was. Then, as part of that, look, we always can do an LED conversion. The, the council approves $5 million for a conversion tomorrow. We can go out and do a $5 million LED conversion. What we wanted to do is to show you, A, how we calculate savings, so you get comfortable with the notion of that if you invest money into a conversion plan, that it will provide a reasonable rate of return back to the city. And then, two, because I think the council recognizes that we have constrained resources for doing capital investment, that we wanted to do is say, in addition to be able to fund these with cash, there may be other mechanisms for how we could do an LED conversion that doesn't require an upfront capital cost by the city, and yet can have a cost-benefit back to the taxpayers. So we felt, having a discussion not only of the conversion itself, but allowing the council to understand ways you could fund that would be of value, you know, to the council. So that's, that's how those kind of got connected together, was we could always do a cash LED conversion. And I think, again, what Michelle has said, we are starting to identify projects. And we have quite a bit more data to go through here in the presentation that I think will move kind of that direction. And so I, that, I think it'd be great to go ahead and let Michelle, if it all, if we have questions, answer to go forward, because I think you'll, you'll start seeing some of the project work they've been investing in the last two years start taking shape as a project.
Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The, before we leave this slide that's up right now, and the idea regarding the water conservation, if our city's anything like our homes, and I suspect it is, we probably use a whole lot more water outdoors than we do indoors. And it seems to me that that's where we're having some serious water misuse issues. We've got, I just witnessed this weekend, a, a long-running, what I think is a long-running leak right here on this property in front of the Bed Museum. Sent that into Glendale One, so we'll see how that pans out. We've got other places in the city where too little water is costing us trees. We've got places where I think too much water and unattended leaks has caused us foundation and basement and mold issues. And I know that there are places in the city where the automated drip irrigation system has failed on trees and caused them to die, and other places where the water distribution is so close to the trunk that the trees don't develop a root zone, and a windstorm comes through and takes them out. And every tree we lose represents dollars to our taxpayers, as well as an impact on the quality of life and the scenery of our downtown, or our parks, and things like that. So as you go forward, I would like that you actually keep outside water use in mind. And we may deal with leaky toilets and drippy faucets on a case-by-case basis, but we're losing and misusing a lot of water outside, and I think that that's worth looking into. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomachov.
Thank you. I do have one more question. So since we're kind of, and I'm looking, you know, the next slide down is solar evaluation, like how solar's going to work at different city facilities. So, I mean, this is definitely moving in the direction of a performance contract. And I don't even know the basics of how, I mean, we, we have, I know for sure we have a contract with McKinstry for $100,000. Does, do these go out for RFP, or because we already have that initial, I don't even know, like, what, exactly what we're even talking about. If like this, you basically put together an RFP and put it out, and people bid on it, or because we already have the consultant sort of a contract with, and that's the only one that I'm aware of, because it was very public. Do we go out for an RFP, or how does that even work?
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachov, I, I think that's one of the last few slides, is, is how it works, what status we're at, and then what, what are the next steps would be. So if, if you, if you don't mind, if we could wait till we get to that point in the presentation, I think we could explain it there.
I have one more question. So anywhere in here, is there an analysis of what it would take for us just to do an LED light conversion? I mean, was there any time spent doing that, just that piece of it? Or was it all rolled into this performance-based? I'm just curious if we're going to be able to look at that side by side.
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachov, if I go back, Councilmember Tomachov, if I go back a couple slides, we looked at just interior lighting and exterior lighting at, at those locations, and, and what I showed you already was not all the locations. So if you, and council gives us the direction to reduce the scope, go LED and LED only, we have that information. We could come back fairly quickly with just that. So as Councilmember Tomachov just said, the next slide is on, in solar evaluation, and really when we look at why solar, really, solar panels today provide 30 years of saving. So the current technology today has a 30-year life on it. It really, it, it does provide you a nice hedge against utility rate increases, so you reduce your electric bill by so much usage that you really are hedging, and so rate increases aren't impacting you that much. And then there's the other, you know, non-actual monetary where you're looking at, you're, you're contributing to your carbon reduction. And so there's the environmental impacts of it as well. And then it's also very highly visible. So if Glendale wants to make the statement that we are converting to a much more green source of energy, it is a highly visible-type project for us. So the other things it does for us is it could provide a shade value, and these could be parking structures, so you get shade-covered parking, and this could be for public or for city employees. And it's also an opportunity for us to look at public education tools via kiosks or any sort of displays in public buildings on what solar is and why it might be good for the environment. So some of the proposed layouts that you see there, we've got three locations at Gripstick. We wanted to just kind of show you guys a, a mix of what we could do. So we looked at the firing range north of the main building, and then kind of west of the main building. And then here at the Civic Center, we looked at a mix of rooftop as well as parking lot. And so this would provide shade to any patrons of the Civic Center and/or city staff that used it. We looked at Foothills Recreation and Aquatic Center, what we could do for solar generation up there, and this is by providing solar-covered parking. And then again, at, at the Adult Center. So this is just kind of some proposed layouts that may work. And then when we actually get into the evaluation, I wanted to show you the size of the system. So there was a, a fair bit of work that went into this, to how much actual systems could be put in, and what our savings were by location. So $210 of savings annually at these four locations. It would cost $3.2 million to do just the solar, and that's a 15.5-year simple payback. When we looked at this conversion, though, what we did want to make sure we included was the inverters, while the panels have a 30-year life, the inverters are only guaranteed for a 10-year life. So we factored into the 3.2 million conversion cost, replacement of those inverters on a 10-year. So this is a whole-in cost, what it would cost to maintain the system for that 30 years. And so after that first 15 years, we've paid it back, your energy savings are true then, and you continue to see those savings, because you factored in the maintenance of that. And it is not just that replacement of the inverters. Factored into this would be an annual inspection and performance verification. I'm a, I was a skeptic on solar, but seeing the details on this and how it would pay off, they did convert me to this, and I, I'm always looking for the green-type source. And we want to continue to look at solar, because it has, over the last 10 years, become a lot less expensive. The life of these systems is getting a lot more reliable and longer, and the inverters are getting better. So we want to continue, and our recommendation is to continue to look at solar options. Covered parking is a true benefit for the, the visitors and citizens that we serve at city buildings and public locations, and so we do want to continue to look at them, and the offset to the electricity cost is a benefit.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, I think this is a good slide, maybe to help, I think, bring some clarity to what, you know, but included in this presentation. So what, this here is not based on a performance contract. What this is, the analysis of the amount of what the capital costs are to, to put the infrastructure in, and then what the projected anticipated savings are. One of our options would be, of course, is we could fund this tomorrow. The council could say, "We want to invest 3.25 million," and we know that we would achieve the, kind of the $210,000 a year savings. But, you know, we, we don't always have an unlimited amount of money to invest. So let's just say that we really don't think within our CIP that we could make this project go for three more years. So let's just say we really can't find a way to finance this for three more years. Well, what it's really saying is, is that we are going to kind of let go of $630,000 of savings, because we didn't achieve the $210,000 of savings for those three years. So in this particular case, there might be, and I say might be, because we didn't base this on, on an energy performance contract, we might have a partner out there that says, "We'll be glad to come in and put in the 3.25 million, and then you can start achieving your savings sooner." It just becomes really another financing mechanism. They bring to the table one additional benefit. When we do the project, we're going to use our best guess for what our savings will be. As Councilmember Aldama mentioned, when you do a performance-based contract, you specify what the savings are, and if they underperform, we're protected, and, and then we're still covered on the upside. So again, when you think about the energy performance contracts, we can self-perform this, but because of our limited resources, we may not have an opportunity to capture all of these savings today. And we just want to be able to show you, there's multiple ways that we could come in and perhaps accelerate these projects, so that we can start capturing the savings sooner rather than later. But just the work that's done here of itself, it, it's really, doesn't matter whether it's we, we funded ourself or somebody else does. It's basically, we anticipate 3.255 million of capital cost within annual savings of 210,000. And so I hope that helps a little bit. We're not making a recommendation today on any kind of a contract to use. What we want to show you is, there, there may be alternative ways to go out and to capture savings that we currently aren't able to take advantage of.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. So really...
Can I interrupt?
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I think what the city manager said makes a lot of sense. And, you know, just as we looked at the fire stations, and we took a fire station or two a year, I would like to approach this rather than LED for the whole city at one time, or solar savings for the city at one time, all at one time, building by building. So we take a holistic look at Gripstick, for, for instance, or the Main Library, and we say, "What kinds of energy projects that will result in cost savings can we do at this facility?" And we try it out, and we see how it works. And if it works well, then we schedule other city buildings over a specified period of time. I'd rather approach it that way, building by building, rather than trying to eat the whole pizza in one bite. Let's take it a little at a time, show that it works, and then plan for the future with the rest of the city buildings. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Clark, because it kind of leads into this slide here, where we look at combining some of these type projects. And I've walked you through some lighting projects and some HVAC, and a little bit of solar. So if we look at lighting alone, it is one of those lower capital costs, but a very high-return item. So typically, you don't pay a lot for it, you see a high-energy savings off it, and its payback is zero to six years. And you look at some of those other larger capital improvements that you may do that have a much smaller energy savings, and the way we may want to look at it is combine these projects together, so your lighting improvement helps pay for some of your HVAC improvements. And that's why I kind of wanted to come together and show you how we could use some of the lighting savings to maybe pay for that HVAC project. And so really, that shorter-term project would fund some of those much more capital-intensive type projects. And again, this is just, it's a funding mechanism. If we choose that we want to do lighting only, we, we can do lighting only, but this is just another mechanism that we can fund these things. So if we look at that, and we look at, at these locations here, and I've, this is Foothills Library, Main Library, Velma Teague, and then some of the parking lighting. So some of the, the measures I'm going to talk about is taking Foothills Library, the exterior LED, the interior LED, the mechanical, so I just talked about that HVAC equipment that we need to repair in the next year, and some of the control systems, the same with the Main Library. Look at Velma Teague, it's interior LED lighting, and then the parks, interior and exterior lighting. So we take this and we combine it all together. And again, you know, Foothills Library, we have, next fiscal year, programmed $225,000 in for the HVAC. Main Library, $455,000. I have not included in these calculations any money from that park, Swarance Park project we currently have ongoing with the CARES funding. But if we look at that and I combine all these projects together, the total cost of this is just over $2 million. The annual energy savings is 200,000, and we could pay for this project in just over 10 years. If we do take that capital money we already have programmed in the CIP and put it towards this project, that $2 million is reduced, and you still get that 200,000 in annual energy savings, and so the payback comes down to 4.2 years. So again, council can make the decision that they want to do lighting and lighting alone, and at one location, or they can combine it together, but this is one way we could have the higher energy-saving projects with low capital cost pay for some of the other projects. Another example of this would be the other locations we looked at. This is the Advocacy Center, the Bead Museum, here at the Civic Center, Fire Station 152, the Adult Center, Foothills Recreation and Aquatic Center, and Gripstick. And we also, again, looked at any HVAC system needs that we might have to do, any capital cost we'd have to put into those locations in the future. Could we include that in energy-saving performance? And here at the Civic Center, there, sorry, at the roof, there is at the Advocacy Center and Bead Museum, we know over the next couple of years, we are having to do some rooftop units. Here at the Civic Center, there is a need also for some HVAC. And then at the Adult Center, we do have programmed in cooling tower replacement and some chilled water pumping. Between fiscal year '22, next year, and '25, we have almost $1 million in the CIP planned for those projects. The lighting is rather extensive, so this is way too much detail, but it does show you that we've looked at it. And so that top line there shows, or sorry, the first column after the location is those locations we've already, and the number of fixtures we've already converted to LED. Like I said, we've already been doing some of this through ongoing maintenance, but now we're looking at it a much more programmatic way. The next, the next column is no retrofit, because it's not cost-effective, and these are those lights that are used very infrequently. So we have some lights here in the Civic Center that have very few hours of operation, and to put into a large cost to convert, it would be much better to do them on a maintenance-type basis. When that light burns out, then you do the capital replacement and convert it to LED versus doing it on a regular one. The next column just looks at replacement fixtures, where we'd have to go in and just replace the fixture. The next column is where we'd need a retrofit kit, and this is where you take the existing fixture and you convert the ballast to a driver and change the actual bulb. I know, way too much information, but I do want to show you that, you know, we, we have gone into the detail, and if council gives us a direction, lighting and lighting only, we can look at just that. So when we look at all these locations, and again, it's the Advocacy Center, Bead Museum, Civic Center, Park and Ride, the Adult Center, Foothills Recreation Aquatic Center, Gripstick, Fire Station 151, and we look at the HVAC controls, the lighting, interior and exterior, the solar that I just showed you, that had the 15-year payback alone. And on this slide, again, we're not factoring in the lighting from these projects that we introduced to council, council approved in October through DAZ CARES funding. So the total conversion cost, the total capital cost for this entire project at all these locations is 5.9 million. Energy savings at 327,000, so a payback for 18 years. But if we do put in that 950,000 that we've got programmed in the capital improvement program for the next couple of years, it drops it down to a 15.1-year payback. So Vice Mayor, councilmembers, Councilwoman Tomachov, I think this is where I wanted to get to with, you know, what, what is the process for energy-savings performance contracts? So this slide shows we are, where we are today. We've just done a preliminary assessment. We've had several companies come in, look at different locations for us. We didn't want to put everything with one company. We have, this is a combination of, of several companies. We initially invited three to come in and work with us. We looked at different locations. We excluded those locations where we're going to go through and recommend a complete retro, sorry, remodel. So we're changing City Hall, and so we're not recommending that building. We're changing the main police station. Same with, we didn't include the prosecutor, because we know we're doing major work there. So we excluded those. We identified locations, systems, and measures, and this is where we are today. And so if, if council wants to give us a consensus that they want us to continue, then we would look at that investment-grade audit. And this is where they go in, and they actually do that guaranteed performance savings. And they put in writing your actual quantified savings that you're going to get off each measure, and based upon that, there would be a, a council contract that would come back, and council approval would be required before we would then go into that and enter into that performance contract, which would include the guaranteed savings and do the work. So Vice Mayor and Council, that, that ends the presentation today. Be happy to, you know, follow up in the future with the direction that council gives us.
Councilmember Malnar.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to make sure I understand, on this combined project two, on page 23, you don't know what the performance contract would be. I, I mean, the numbers you're putting on here are just what your estimated costs are. Do you have any, would this be eligible for like a, a full-funded contract?
Vice Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Malnar, going back to this slide, so based upon our preliminary assessment, the capital cost to replace this would be 5.9 million. If we choose to go ahead and ask the company to put this in writing and develop a contract off it to give us the guaranteed savings, that, that would be the next step. But based upon what we've seen, and assuming we've made, made no major changes for this, the conversion cost, the capital cost for this project is the 5.9 million. And the next step would be to refine those numbers and make sure the guarantees are in the, in the contract.
And what would be the city's cash output requirement? Would that be the 950?
Vice Mayor and councilmembers, Councilwoman Malnar, the city would have the option of paying upfront nothing and paying for it over the 18 years, the 327,000 that they would guarantee in the savings. We could also then have the option of putting in the 950,000 that we've got programmed in the CIP, or we would have the option, if, as Councilmember Clark was saying, there's a potential for federal funding for energy renewable projects. We could have the option to submitting this as a shovel-ready project and using the, an entire 5.9 million, hopefully, of federal money, and the city paying nothing of it. So it's, it's a funding mechanism at that point.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I would be very much in favor of, of providing consensus to move forward on not only the LED, but other projects that could be tied into it that would make sense, and then bringing that back to council for additional approval of any kind of contract. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Tomachov.
Thank you. I'm still a little confused about how this works, so, I mean, you said you've been working with three performance contractors. So do they, do you do an, let's say we say, "Okay, go ahead and engage with somebody on this HVAC." Do you give them, do they all submit a proposal to us on how? I just, I still don't really understand how this works.
Vice Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachov, we selected three firms... Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Tomashoff, we selected three firms based upon the state contract. So the state of Arizona went out for bid, did RFPs, and selected three vendors based upon their qualifications. We entered contracts with all three. One has failed to perform. We have not got results out of them yet. The other two, we've presented here as kind of their projects, the combined projects. We could break it apart into individual aspects of it, but if council chooses to, we would then take, and we wouldn't, with the professional services, you can't bid one company against another. These are professional services. You select the best company, and then you negotiate pricing with them. This is how procurement and engineering work on these projects. The other option would be for us to select an architect and do a full design on these and go to bid on them. It's just not, it's not a performance-based contract. That would just be a different capital-type contract.
Vice Mayor, who are the two that we have the contract with?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Tomashoff, we have a contract with McKinstry, and we have a contract with Midstate Energy.
Vice Mayor, if I could continue, the Midstate Energy contract expires October 2021. Is the intention to renew that or leave McKinstry the lone-standing contract?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Tomashoff, I believe both expire this fall. The city could extend those contracts. They could extend one of the contracts. It was always our intent to continue if a company, for example, McKinstry, has worked on one location, if council gives us direction to continue with that location, we would continue with that company. The same with Midstate. If they've provided us the initial preliminary assessment of a location, we would continue on with that company.
So, okay, that's, so basically, they're given direction to do an assessment on a facility or something, and then basically that ensures that if we move forward with that, they get that contract? Is that what you're saying? Because they can't compete against each other? Let's say you had one company, let's say, give us an assessment of the HVAC. If somebody's already done the analysis of that, only one of those companies was directed to do that analysis, is that right?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Tomashoff, you're correct. But at this stage, before we hit that investment-grade audit, we have the option, and we can go with whatever company we want to. Once we start down that path, you're somewhat committed to that company because they've now invested significant amount of their money to guarantee you these savings off that. We have not yet hit that point today. We're set the preliminary assessment. We've identified locations, systems, and measures that are potential. That would be the next step. And if we do want to enter into that investment-grade audit, that would come back to council as a council contract to be approved.
So, are, will, who determines which contract gets brought back to us?
Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Tomashoff, I believe that I would have to check with engineering and procurement on, as well as advice from the legal department. I don't believe it's under my purview or my department's purview to select one contractor and say we'd go forward with that.
So you said, but that one of them would be brought back to council, so I'm just for the council to approve, so who determines which contract is brought back? Would that be the city manager? I'm just curious, I don't, literally, I don't know how this works, so. Who makes, you don't bring, you just said you're not going to bring back two contracts, you're going to pick the best one and bring it back to the council. So who picks the best one? And then what is the, what's the evaluation process to determine which one's the best one?
Yeah, apologize. Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Tomashoff, we have, we selected the three off the state contract to do this with. We would then look at, as part of this, in conjunction with procurement, to make sure we're following procurement requirements, engineering with Title 34, and the attorney's office. I believe this would be a recommendation from the group to determine which of these companies we would move forward with based upon the information they've given us. The city's now had an ability to see through the preliminary assessment what each company has offered, but I think it would be an internal evaluation committee to come back with that recommendation, and then we would run it through procurement, engineering, attorney's office, to make that recommendation.
Okay, thank you. That's all for now.
Councilmember Clark?
Thank you. I'm so confused at this point. Why can't we do something like this? We've got Foothills Branch Library, in the upcoming CIP, we've programmed $225,000 for chiller replacement in fiscal year '22. Glendale Main Library, we've got same thing, chiller replacement for $455,000. So both of those projects are kind of pre-funded in one aspect of the project. What, just from an ignorant point of view, why can't we say to Sun State, you give us an assessment of Foothills Branch Library and McKinstry, you give us an assessment of Glendale Main Library, and use both contractors on different projects? At the end of those projects, we'll know which one works the best, has delivered the best, and we are comfortable with. Why can't we do something like that? Is that totally outside the realm of possibility? Question.
Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, I believe that's exactly what we could do. I just would need to confirm with procurement and engineering, because engineering, you know, does help us with Title 34 and the attorney's office. But that's, that's why we initially started off with three companies, was to determine, you know, who's looking at it holistically, who's working with the city. And through this entire process, we started with three. One has failed to meet our requirements. They've had a huge staff turnover, and we have not been able to get anything reliable out of them to date, so we're currently working with two. We could easily give, you know, two very small projects, one each, and see what works out, what doesn't work, and manage it that way. That's an option as well.
Vice Mayor, if I could follow up? I'd like to do something like that. It's almost like a pilot project. It's like a run-through to see who performs the best and meets our needs the best while getting some work done. And both of them would look at each building holistically, correct? So they wouldn't look just at the HVAC, but they would look at the interior lighting, solar, the whole ball of wax. Would that be correct?
Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, that would be correct. If we directed them, look at this building holistically, they would do that. We could also direct them that we wanted to look at lighting and lighting alone. That's a city recommendation, and we've got complete authority on that. And until we actually get into the performance contract, we can deny any of those measures. So if a company comes back and says, here's what we could do for you, and we find that there's one measure that just doesn't make sense to us, we could exclude that from the contract.
Okay. I'd like to do that. I'd like to issue each company one project, one pilot project to begin with, and in a holistic sense, and see which performs the best, gives us the best bang for our buck, and that meets our expectations. Other than that, I have no further comment.
Thank you. Mr. Phelps?
Vice Mayor, members of the council. So again, kind of going through the process, this is the reason we wanted to kind of at least have the discussion about what performance-based contracts are. We didn't want to come back, you know, and go through the work of creating an investment-grade audit and all the things that have to be as part of a performance-based contract. If the council just kind of fundamentally said, we don't really want to use performance-based contracts as a funding mechanism. So this one, this is kind of designed to, one, is there enough interest by the council for us at least to take it to the next step? I'd like to define just really quickly, when you see investment-grade audit, obviously we're used to audits here in government world. So what an investment-grade audit is, and there's a lot of work to create that in industry. So let's take Tesla, and they want to build a new factory line. What they will, that'll be more efficient, what they'll do is you can do an audit on the savings, and then that audit is of high enough quality and meets so specific standards that a financial institution would loan money based on it. So when you see the word "investment-grade," it's not just an audit they do kind of randomly. It is the type of audit that a large financial institution would require a demonstration of the savings before they would fund a $60 or $70 million, say, let's say it's Red Bull improving their manufacturing line. And so that's, so there's a lot of work to be able to create that. So what we want to do today was give you kind of the general concept, and if there seems to be at least some interest, we can very easily slide into this casually or slowly and get familiar with it, and then if it's successful for us, we can kind of ramp that up. So to what Councilmember Clark kind of just mentioned, I think we can very easily look to see what makes sense. Now, we probably will still continue to look to add on other performance-based firms out there, because not all are expert in every area. There will be certain companies that are expert, for example, on HVAC controls and just the complexity of doing that. I'm thinking of a Johnson Controls, for example, as being an industry leader there that maybe Midstate Energy isn't real familiar with. But there may be other things that Midstate do that's in an area of expertise that can look for other types of savings. So we could certainly, if there's general consensus, to at least consider the use of performance-based contracts. We could then go back and do kind of two pilot projects and get the comfortable, comfortable with what it looks like. Bring those back, monitor it, measure it, and then if it looks like it's worked well, we can start ramping up the use. If it doesn't meet our expectation, obviously, we can try to find a different way to fund the conversions and the energy efficiencies that we're trying to achieve.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilmember Turner. I may, thank you. Well, I'm concerned that we're being asked for a consensus on something here right now that the agenda didn't say we'd be asked for a consensus on. The staff background report didn't say we were going to be asked for a consensus on this. The slide presentation didn't indicate that we'd be being asked for a consensus on this, and I'm not ready to give my consensus.
Vice Mayor?
Want to go, Councilmember Clark?
I am ready to give my consensus. I'm ready to start, as the city manager phrased it, with two pilot projects on a performance-based basis. And I want to see how well this works for the city. And if it does work well, then we can consider other projects. So I'm ready to move forward, and I say, do it.
Let me go. Yeah, I too would like to move forward to the next step and see how it all looks in. Councilmember Tomashoff?
I'm curious, what are you talking about moving forward with? With, as Councilmember Clark suggested, basically a pilot project with both of the companies? Or what are we, I just want to make sure I understand. I'm willing to do that. I'm not willing to get, to just to pick a contractor right now, and I honestly have serious concerns about one of them, moving forward with one of them. I'm not going to say the name again, I've mentioned it already enough times, but because of the history and what transpired before, but if we are going to do a side-by-side comparison based on performance, I'm willing to move forward with that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So Ms. Rios could answer all these questions. They're different buildings, different spaces of a building, so they can all be different contracts or different projects, as the councilwoman over here, Councilmember Clark, mentioned. So they can all be separate projects, it's not a problem. And then, the vendors you mentioned have already been vetted through the state, if they're state contracts. That's already done for us. We don't have to do anything. And then if they're RFPs that went through the city, they've already been vetted. So I use contracts all the time, rather than go out to bid and create scopes of work and try to get the best detail and best cost. You just go to a contract, much easier for the city. So I'm comfortable moving forward. I really am. Sounds like there's one contractor who's maybe at question, but again, they're vetted. If it's a state contract, and again, I'm really comfortable in this area, but if it's a state contract, they've been vetted, it's a done deal. They can be used, they're used by colleges, they're used by cities, they're used by many, many public entities. So I'm comfortable moving forward, and I'm comfortable doing it with many projects rather than just one or two with different contractors.
Mr. Friedling, you have a comment?
Vice Mayor, if I, just for clarity, what, and I'm glad to have our city manager, Michelle, correct me, but I think as the presentation flowed, there's two contractors, these are professional contracts, professional services. I'm not sure that we can have them compete in the sense that take a look at one project and compete with each other and try to show me what you can do. What I think in the context of this presentation was two projects. One project would be given to one of the firms, and the other project, the other. So that they would both be working concurrently on different areas. I think we tried to cover a lot of different things, whether that was correct and absolutely focused on the CIOs, I, you know, probably not. But I think when we delved in and tried to frame this, we saw some real good advantages in trying to pull these together. So I think the initial ask was, we have two projects, we have two contractors, we would like one of the contractors to take a look and do the audit on Project One, the other one would do on Project Two. We would do a lot of work, and we would certainly work with engineering to ensure that we're working vis-à-vis Title 34 with reference to professional services, and also reviewing the investment-grade audit, bringing finance involved especially, and trying to confirm how the contract would actually work and how it could be guaranteed that anything that would suggest that we have specific savings, be sure that we can, or there's a, some type of contingency that ensures that the contractor would make the difference up, if you will. So I think, you know, again, Michelle can correct me, but I think, and I don't know which firm is for Project One, I don't know which firm is Project Two, Michelle might know that, but I think that was in the context of what we were trying to present.
Vice Mayor, I would like to make one correction. I never suggested one contract go for Project One and one project go for Project Two. I suggested specifically two separate buildings, and I chose Foothills Branch Library and Glendale Main Library, both because we're about to expend money for chillers, and that is already programmed in the CIP. So I thought that these two projects that are upcoming could very well benefit from each having one of these two contractors or consultants or whatever they're called, each handle one of each of these projects. So there would be no competition between these two companies. They're both not bidding on one project, one library. Each would be given a separate library, and that was my original proposal. So I just wanted to make that correction, that Project One encompasses, in the slides, a great deal more than what I had envisioned, as does Project Two. I would rather just focus on buildings and focus on the two buildings that we are currently programming the expenditure of funds for chillers for.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Yeah, and I think it's how we interpreted what you said. So now, let me be clear then, what you're kind of giving consensus to. There still is a process that they have to come up with the performance-based contract, identifying the savings and what, how it will work. That will still be brought back to the council, and the council still has the ability to say no at that time. So today's, you know, kind of consensus moving forward is really to move forward to the next step of developing a performance-based contract. You then have the opportunity still to say, if you don't like one of the two projects, you could eliminate one of them, you could eliminate both of them, you're not making an obligation. an obligation today to approve the contract. A couple other quick things of why we think the performance-based contracts work. To date, Michelle's team has been working a lot in consulting with the private sector to identify technologies and potential savings. We don't have that type of expertise internal to Glendale. To date, with our two companies that we're talking about potentially entering into performance-based contract, that being the McKinstry Company and that being Midstate Energy, to date, they have received a total of zero dollars from the city of Glendale. So one of the advantages is they invest their time on the front end, recognizing that it may not lead to any type of business with the city. It's only then when, when we say, all right, we're now ready to kind of take it to the next stage, is when, when they start, really, things start changing that's there. Just as a reminder, my son, who lives approximately 2,000 miles in the Seattle area, works for the McKinstry Company. He works in a division that is not associated with the Arizona project, which does performance-based contracts. But, but I wanted to make sure the council was aware that he still is employed in the city of Seattle, but he has nothing to do with management oversight or decision-making on these contracts. And we'll make sure that in our, if we bring forth any contract with McKinstry in the future, we'll make sure the staff report clearly identifies the relationship to the city manager and to make sure that the council's comfortable there's not a conflict. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we have consensus to go ahead and move forward. Why are you starting? Councilmember Turner, we postponed the parks. Do you wonder if you missed it? No, it's postponed till the next meeting?
Well, fortunately, these meetings are broadcast on Facebook Live, so I was able to catch that on my, on my way in.
Presentation regarding amending city code to address vehicle noise penalties.
Vice Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report is Deputy City Manager Rick St. John.
Good afternoon, Mayor, or Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is a recommendation from our Code Committee. I'm seeking consensus today from council to amend Section 2567, subsection E, making a first offense of this provision a civil offense and setting a mandatory fine amount. This section of the noise ordinance deals with engine noise and radio noise coming from vehicles. And it prohibits that noise between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So an example would be somebody working on their vehicle in their garage at 2:00 in the morning, revving an engine, creating a disturbance in the neighborhood, that would be in violation of this section. Currently, it is a Class 1 misdemeanor to violate this section. There is no provision in this section for an officer to issue a civil citation. The Code Review Committee is recommending that a first offense be a civil violation with a set fine amount. As you can see, I've just included a $100 fine, but this council can set the fine at whatever you would deem reasonable. And any subsequent violation of this section by the same offender in a 12-month period would be classified as a Class 1 misdemeanor and punishable in accordance with Arizona state law. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. St. John, you mentioned the, as an example, the situation of somebody working on their vehicle on their own property late at night. Would this ordinance also apply to vehicles that are being driven on public streets, regardless of the time of day? And would it also apply to vehicles perhaps on shopping center properties or, you know, other public spaces that may not be publicly owned but are open to the public? Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Turner, would apply to vehicles on any public roadway, on any other types of public or private properties. When it comes to vehicle noise, when the vehicle is being driven, we have to be careful to ensure that there's been a modification to the vehicle that makes it louder than it was manufactured to be. Some vehicles are manufactured to make noise when they're driven and those muscle car types of vehicles. And so we wouldn't want to cite someone even civilly for driving a vehicle that was manufactured to make that noise unless they were doing something unreasonable. And that would be racing up and down a roadway at 2:00 in the morning, in my mind. And we would probably deal with the racing more than the vehicle noise at that point. But yes, if, if someone was in a parking lot, creating an unreasonable amount of noise with their vehicle engine or a radio from their vehicle, this could be enforced, say, at Arrowhead Country Club, at Arrowhead Mall, or Westgate, provided we had people that were willing to be victims of that disturbance.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the additional information.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Clark?
One, one question. Did you specify a time constraint in this ordinance?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Clark, the ordinance does say that unreasonable noise between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. However, unreasonable noise that, again, disturbs the peace and quiet of a neighborhood can be enforced at any time of the day. The code does say.
That's what I wanted clarification about. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Go ahead.
As I've thought about this after the Code Committee recommended it, and, and given the example that Councilmember Turner brought up regarding, say, loud cars that are, and again, I, I envision more the type that are doing wheelies in the parking lot late at night and disturbing our residents. The $100 is, to some of these folks, isn't that much of a deterrent. It's like, whoa, you know, look what I got away with, you know, I, I only got a $100 fine, there's no other consequence, just a fine of $100. But I was able to show off to all my friends and do a video or do whatever they do when they make those kind of noises. So my question to the council would be, would we want to either raise that initial fine or perhaps put a, an additional fine in there that if you have any subsequent-like offenses within the first 12 months, that it goes up to $500 per offense? And then maybe after that, then it becomes a civil or a misdemeanor. Again, as we discussed in our code meeting, you know, an officer going out and, you know, somebody that is making noise on the street, they're, they were reluctant to give them a criminal offense for having done that. Is what kind of, that it's like, you know, it's just making noise, it's not a major issue. Though for, and I don't want to demean that it's not major, it is a real concern, but so we put it into a civil violation. And that's why we recommended doing the civil violation because it does lessen the impact on somebody for the first time having gone out and done a wheelie or, or made noise in their garage with a radio or whatever they did, that it does, it's not so, such a big impact on their lives. But if they continue to do it, rather than go just straight to a misdemeanor, I would like to, to see maybe that we have a second fine of $500. Because then that starts to bite in a little bit. You know, if, if you want to play your radio late at night in your garage and you want to pay $500 every time you do that, go for it. You know, we're just providing tax money for the city of Glendale. But I, I just wanted to throw that out and see what the council thought.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Clark?
I concur with Councilmember Malnar. Rather than turning it after the first offense into a misdemeanor, I would much rather bump up the fines. And I like the idea of something more punitive like $500. So I would support your suggestion.
Vice Mayor, if I may, or would you, because right now it's written as a 100 civil fine, so would you want to add for the second offense to go to a higher amount or have that first offense be more, be a higher amount?
If I could respond, the 100 is like a warning, it's like giving somebody a warning the first time. I think the second one, I like the idea of a $500 fine.
You know, I, I agree with staying with the 100, I know it's maybe as an example, and then the second offense.
Oh, with the 500?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Question, may have already been answered, the question Councilmember Clark mentioned. Mr. St. John, so an example if, because this is specific to vehicle radio noise, so if someone is working in the garage and the vehicle is make, not making any noise, but their sound system in the garage is, that's also covered, am I correct, with a regular noise ordinance?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, that is correct. It's a separate section of the same.
Okay. So if you show up and you say, well, it wasn't my automobile radio, it's my home, it's the same, okay. And then so I, I would support a second offense to be a lot higher, so I think it's a $500, I would be comfortable with it.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Thank you. A second offense in forever or a second offense in a, in a certain specific timeframe?
12 months, I think.
Okay, well, that's what I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, it's really, I don't think it's really fair to say a second offense in, in forever. All right. In a 12-month period, I would, I would, I would be fine with that.
And then I would add to that, if I may, that I still would like to go to the next offense, if there's another offense within that 12-month period, that it would become a misdemeanor, that it would become more punitive.
That's our understanding, yes.
So that language would stay there, we would just add an additional $500 fine for the second offense and then go, the third offense would be the Class 1 misdemeanor. That would be the language change.
Councilmember Turner?
Oh, thank you. I have two concerns that are coming up with this change. The reason this has come before us is because through outside channels, not up through the chain of command, but through outside channels, word came to some council members that our police department was, or police officers were reluctant to enforce the code that the city council had adopted because they felt it was too strict. Now, I'm not particularly thrilled about that, but we took it under advisement and we came up with something different. Now, I wonder whether or not $500 is going to get enforced on the second offense or if that is also now too strict. It's too big a fine. So there needs to be some resolution of that aspect of it, you know, is it, you know, what are we going to see in the way of enforcement? Then my other concern is, is that, so if somebody's working on their car, that example, 2:00 in the morning, and their sound system is making the noise, not their automobile, you know, but their, their home stereo is, then they don't have the same fine. And it doesn't count as a first offense. And also if somebody is, you know, having a party and it has one set of penalties that I don't even know what are, but they could have another loud party two weeks later and wouldn't necessarily align with the penalty that they would have got had they been working on their car instead of, you know, having friends over. So we're doing this on the fly and we don't really see how it fits together, and I think it ought to fit together. I think we should have some consistency and reasonableness to this and some logic behind it, and I'm just think we're, you know, kind of getting a little away from that at this point. The concern that I felt residents had wasn't, and, and it, maybe we just got off on a bad tangent because, you know, the, the one example, but the concern that I think residents have had and what this is really intended to apply to is vehicles while they're driving on our city streets. And to some degree, while they're in other public places, such as parking, public parking lots and that sort of thing. And I think that's the, the angle we ought to look at it from. I do believe that for lots and lots of my residents, a $100 fine is significant and, and a $500 fine would, would be a heck of a large burden on them that might not be felt the same across the city, perhaps. So I'm more inclined to, let's do today what the Code Committee recommended, not legislate on the fly, but just move forward with what's been presented. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Malnar?
I, I can understand those, those sentiments. I, I just had some questions, I want to make sure that, that this particular thing only applies to vehicle noise. And I think, Councilmember Dom, I don't know if, if that was clarified.
It was, and now that, that Councilmember, Councilmember Turner mentioned, I don't think I was very clear and I don't think it was.
So, Mr. St. John, is, what we're doing today only apply to vehicular noise?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, it applies to noise coming from a vehicle either made by the engine or by the radio inside the vehicle.
Okay, so just vehicle then. And I guess, you know, the, the concern that Councilmember Turner mentioned regarding reluctance of a police officer, given, the reluctance, I believe, was coming from turning it into a criminal offense. That was the reluctance. I believe if, if we, we do need to make it stiff and harsh so that this type of activity ceases. I think the 100 is very reasonable, and I think a 500 for a second offense being caught is, is very reasonable. And I would just like to point out, I don't think any of the residents you were talking about, Councilmember Turner, would be the ones that would be violating this particular offense. But I, I'd still, I still believe that making it a very stiff fine for the second offense, I mean, having it a misdemeanor is, I, I think, a little bit too stiff for the second one. So I'm just suggesting, instead of going directly to a misdemeanor, end the fines and the court and everything else that go along with that, because it could end up, I don't know what the fine would be, the court would determine that, that we, we put it at $500 so that we get the message out. You know, if you want to go out in your car, make loud noise late at night and disturb our residents, we'll give you a chance the first time, it'd just be $100. But if you do it again and do it several times again within 12 months, it's going to be $500 each. And I think that message needs to get across to those who are violating this. Because those who are violating it are the ones that need to get that message. And I don't think it's the average resident, that's been the long-term resident in Glendale, the, they are not, are not the ones that are out there doing this. It's other people that are doing it.
Any other clarification?
Vice Mayor, thank you. If I may offer a suggestion, the conversation the Code Review Committee really dealt with engine noise. And the committee member that brought it forward said that officers, in her experience, were reluctant to cite criminally for engine noise. It had nothing, the conversation had nothing to do with radio noise coming from a vehicle. Radio noise is covered in other sections of the noise ordinance, and it is a Class 1 misdemeanor in other sections of the noise ordinance. And to my knowledge, officers do not have a problem citing Class 1 misdemeanor and seizing radio equipment when sufficient warnings have been given and ignored by a homeowner or somebody making the noise. If I may offer, this rewrite says any provision of this section shall be deemed a public nuisance and punishable under one set of standards. We could separate the standards so that subsection one, which deals with engine noise, is a civil offense punishable by a $100 fine on a first offense, $500 fine second offense, misdemeanor for third or any future offense in a 12-month period, and then leave the radio noise in line with the rest of the, of the section on noise that says it's a Class 1 misdemeanor on a first offense. Because how we enforce, multiple warnings are given before we issue a citation for noise and then seize equipment. So essentially, we'd be separating even this section so that certain provisions are a civil offense, other are a criminal offense in line with the rest of our code.
Any comments?
I, I would be in favor of that.
I think we have consensus. Thank you. Will you introduce the next item?
The cubes at Glendale AN-224 annexation located on the southeast corner of Reams Road and Northern Avenue.
Vice Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report on items four and five is interim planning director David Regard.
Thank you for the opportunity today to explain these annexations. The cubes at Glendale is getting to be quite an icon for the community, so let me move through this reasonably quickly. This is a map that actually shows you the vicinity of where downtown is on the right and then on the west side of the airport being Luke Air Force Base. and then on the west side of the airport, being Luke Air Force Base, is the cubes. The second annexation is what this is actually about. Seventy-six acre, seventy-six acres approximately south and northern, east of Reams Road, north of the Luke Air Force Base, and they're planning on approximately 1.2 million square feet of industrial and manufacturing within the city, a proper land use next to Luke. We're looking for your direction today to move forward with the annexation process, and on September 24, 2019, this was some time ago, the council at that point approved the pre-annexation agreement to allow the property owner to address the infrastructure needs with staff. What has been found is that there's a net annual increase of $250,000, and a one-time construction sales tax of $4.9 million. Here is a map that I'm going to have to try to get revised, because it shows 12 other annexations working at this point. This is exciting for Glendale for all that's happening, because the land use and the proper use of the property, again, will meet with today's standards, not something that was done 15, 20 years ago. The noise contours, again, comply, this type of use will be within the 65, 70, and 75 noise contours, and with that in mind, the type of use proposed is something that Luke has supported, along with the city of Glendale. Surrounding land uses today are still the county applications, the residential, low-density things further to the west, and the Reams Ranch industrial south of this site, which will be tied together, and then the Luke Air Force Base directly to the east. You have a general plan designation for the Luke compatibility land use area, and this fits squarely within it, and I think everybody supports that. The conversion of the zoning is RU43 in the county, and it would be RR45, rural residential in the city. They ultimately will go for rezoning, and so what we're looking for at this point today is, the state statute requires the blank petition to be requiring a public hearing, and is tentatively scheduled for April 13. The property owner's signatures then can be obtained on the petition, and we are scheduling, hopefully, on the 27th of April 2021, your adoption of the annexation, if everything goes well, and the annexation then, if approved, would become part of the city's boundary within 30 days. That concludes the comments I had on this. If you have any questions on this, or consensus to move forward with it, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Malnar?
Thank you, just had one quick question. The cubes at Glendale, you said it's within the Luke contours, is that contour that it is within, is it eligible for any kind of housing, residential housing?
Actually, Vice Mayor, Councilman, Councilman Malnar, no, we would not suggest any housing anywhere near that location. We work with Luke on a weekly, monthly, yearly basis to try to encourage the industrial warehousing and those types of employment uses adjacent to Luke, to better serve them and us at the same time.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that, so, they will be rezoning that to commercial, is what you stated, so, it comes in as residential, but it's going to be converted to, or?
Vice Mayor, Councilman, and Councilman Malnar, we believe it'll be for industrial use, and warehouse, wholesaling, and those types of uses to tie to the piece that was already annexed further to the south.
All right, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Clark?
I support this project. It meets council goal of continuing to develop exactly this kind of project in the area, and is compatible with Luke, so I would like to see it move forward. Thank you.
Any other comments at this time? I'd like to see it move forward, we have consensus, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you, Julie.
Falcon Park, AN-222 annexation, north of the 152nd Avenue and Camelback Road intersection.
Excuse me, I was just getting out something, I have to correct on this presentation, because it already had been uploaded, but as it has been stated, Falcon Park, Annexation 222, again, location map, downtown, City Hall on the right, and this is on the south side, if you will, of Luke Air Force Base at about 152nd Avenue. It's a 78-acre parcel, north of Camelback Road, as I said, west of 152nd, and south of the airport base. About 595,000 square feet is going to be proposed on this particular property for industrial and manufacturing use. The close proximity to the 303 is really making a lot of these projects come forward right now, and we're actually very busy with most of them. On this afternoon at the workshop, this was to be discussed as part of your city council pre-annexation agreement with the company that, or the property owner wants to move forward, and we believe the infrastructure will support this request, but we had to kind of take them out of order today. We're looking, again, for your direction to move forward with the annexation. Again, the analysis that was accomplished here, the annual review is 440,000, repeating benefits to the city, and about a 4.8 million, again, in terms of sales tax and construction permitting, and you can see the charts and how they lay out, but staff feels pretty comfortable with this site as well. Again, this is the location with all the other annexations going on, and we, one of the efforts I'm going to try to do, is get more of these people to talk together, and get more of the annexations being cumulative, instead of small pieces at a time, and that just takes some outreach from the staff and the planning division. The contours, again, are within the 65, 70, 75 noise contours, and again, would not support residential. The location, as you can see, is south of the Luke Air Force Base, and Goodyear is further to the south, Maricopa County is to the east, we have Maricopa County to the west and to north, the airport as it sits there on the graphic. Again, you can see its location within the Luke land use compatibility areas. Their zoning, again, is RU43, but we are converting this to, the zoning in Glendale to PAD, to allow for a mix of residential, not residential, but retail and commercial development, if possible. And again, a blank petition on this particular case would be scheduled for April 13, and that allows the petitioners to move forward with the petition to get signatures. City council agenda, I guess, did get corrected. It was previously for May 11, we're trying to speed this up a little bit, to April 27, and if approved, again, 30 days following that date, it will become part of the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And Councilmember Tomachak?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm a little confused, because on the previous presentation, you said existing Maricopa zoning, Maricopa County zoning was RU43, and like zoning would be coming into Glendale, RR45, and then on this presentation, it's going to be a PAD. So I'm just curious, why the difference?
There are, Vice Mayor, Councilperson, and Councilwoman Tobichak, the rezoning of the property to the PAD is a more restrictive, but allows some flexibility, that the property wants, or the property owner would like to have. We're not giving them anything more than what they had in the county, it's just some flexibility with the types of uses and some of the standards. If that is an issue, it can, the zoning process has not been taken through yet, so we can certainly develop you a listing of both, and bring that forward with the zoning case that would come forward here in the near future.
Vice Mayor, if I could, I just, I mean, I would like to see some consistency. I know RU43 is strictly, I believe, residential, isn't it? It doesn't allow for any commercial or industrial?
That's correct.
Maybe I'm wrong. That's correct? So I'm just, I mean, I understand the, but to me, literally, we just had a presentation right before this, that's exactly the same zoning, and I believe our annexation policy requires that they be annexed in under the zoning, the existing zoning, or as close to the existing zonings as we can get them. So just confused why, why one's RU43 and coming in is our, and the other one's coming in as a PAD, so it's a little confusing for me.
Vice Mayor, Councilwoman, and Councilwoman, Tomachak, we will clarify that for you, and make sure that it is not exceeding any levels, and it takes it, I believe, to a level in the industrial classification, that gives them some flexibility here, and we're not trying to grant them anything beyond what they have in the county, but I can, I'll clarify that for you.
Okay, Vice Mayor, so they're not going to be doing residential, and that's what they're zoned for, so obvious, so would the PAD be coming through the approval process, or they're being annexed in as, with an agreement that's already being put together, PAD that's already being put together, and that's going to be their zoning when they are annexed in?
Vice Mayor, councilpeople, and Councilwoman Cobencha, it's supposed to go through a zoning process, similar to the zoning that you normally do as part of the annexation, and the information that was provided on the PUD is something that I need more detail on myself now to answer your questions, so.
Okay.
We're not going to do anything more, and it will come through the same process, so that you will see it, and make that determination, and that we don't upzone the property, for example, and we're not encouraging the residential, and that may have been what happened in the county, is that they were in the process of rezoning to PAD, and we're trying to avoid that with the relationship with Luke, so.
I understand that, Vice Mayor, if I could, I just want to make sure that there's a, that there's an opportunity for public, you know, to be notified and all of that for the change, and I know some of that property out there has been zoned residential for years and years and years, before there were even Luke contours out there, so I understand that they're not really eligible for residential development, but the surrounding community, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, that we're being fair with the residents that already live out there, and like I said, I mean, to see one coming in under still residential, being annexed in, and it's also going to be in industrial development, and then the very next project you present is only exactly the same way, and coming in as a PAD, it's just a little confusing. I'd just like to see it be consistent, so it's not so confusing.
Agreed.
Vice Mayor?
Just a second. City manager, did you have a comment? No, fine. Councilmember Clark?
For the very same reasons that I stated on the previous project, this supports the goals of the city council, and the direction that's been given, and I would like to see this project move forward. And I do have one question. Today, we received an announcement about a major locate in that area, and I wondered who would be speaking to that, because I was led to believe that it would be announced during workshop. So I, can someone answer that?
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, I'm planning on providing an update on my council manager report on that item.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Vice Mayor?
Yes?
I just think, I mean, if we're gonna, if we need to amend our annexation policy, then I'm, I mean, maybe we should have that discussion, but our policy does say that it's supposed to be brought into the city under the same, and that's what the policy says, so that's why it's confusing. So if we need to take a look at our policy, then I'm willing to have that conversation, that's all.
Do we have consensus to move forward with this? We do, thank you. Next item on our agenda is the city manager's report. Mr. Phelps?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I have three items to brief you on. The first, on behalf of Mayor Wires, who wanted me to share this information for him on his behalf, as Councilmember Clark just said, we had, today, Amazon announced that they're building a 270,000-square-foot facility here in Glendale, in the west part of our growth area, and obviously, we're very excited to welcome one of the most recognizable companies in the world into the city of Glendale. The location is going to really allow them to provide better service to a growing customer base, and will be joining two other announced facilities here within the greater valley. They'll be bringing, all total, about 1,000 full and part-time jobs to the metro area. On, we have an upcoming groundbreaking at Glen 91, so this project is at the intersection of Glendale Avenue and 91st, this is the southeast quadrant, that has been vacant farmland for forever, I guess, would probably be the best way to say that, and so on March 30, HCW, the developers, they brought us the Loft Hotel in Westgate, they're developing a 296-unit complex. We've had a chance to review, obviously, their architectural design, it will be four stories, which we're very happy about with the density, and they have some of the, probably the most robust amenities, they'll be offering their residents there, and so this is going to be really a quality project, and we think will be value-added to the Westgate area. And then probably the most exciting news, positive news, even beyond those two, is that, working with our deputy city manager, Rick St. John, who's handling our COVID implementation, is that we are happy to announce that we're going to have our second point of distribution for our city of Glendale employees, and we'll be doing that, issuing the Johnson &amp; Johnson single-dose vaccines, so we only have to do it one time for the employees to come down. We were, we've been told we'll be receiving 200 doses, and so we'll be providing that for our employees, and we're going to, even though, and this will be done on April 1, we recognize that there still will be a need by our employees, and so we're continuing to work with our different authorities to continue to get more and more vaccinations assigned to us, but we are excited about the next pod opening on April 1 for 200 people. And Mr. Vice Mayor, it's my report.
Thank you. Our next item is the city attorney's report. Anything today?
Nothing at this time, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Council items of special interest. The next item on the agenda is council items of special interest. Each council member will have the opportunity to indicate topics they would like to have discussed by the council at a future workshop. Councilmember Aldama?
None at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Malnar?
Nothing today.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachak?
Vice Mayor, I do have something today. I'd like to have staff bring us back a discussion about general maintenance policy, about facilities in neighborhoods. Recently had an issue with Fire Station 156 that was last painted in 2006, the HOA and some of the other communities, other neighbors in the community, started asking about it, and I found out that it wasn't scheduled to be painted until 2026, which is when it's scheduled for remodel. And painting the exterior once every 20 years, especially when you're basically plopped down in the middle of a neighborhood, is a long time to wait in between painting the exterior, so, like to have staff bring us back a discussion about whether we have a different policy about just general, I believe that that's O and M, that we shouldn't just paint exteriors when we do remodeling, that we probably should have a better policy about that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I actually have two items today. As we all are aware, the recent sale of Glen Lakes Golf Course, left behind is a parcel on the corner of, the northeast corner of 55th Avenue and Northern, that still is the parking lot, plus the buildings that were the restaurant and the pro-shop area. I would like for the council to consider putting Um, I would like for the council to consider putting that parcel on the market, perhaps even, uh, checking with, for any input from the neighborhood as to what use they might like to have there, but certainly, uh, let's get that parcel active, and also that the council needs to determine how we're going to deal with the buildings that are left behind. Um, with the lack of maintenance, they're becoming a blight on the neighborhood, and code violations, and, and we have trees dying and quite a bit of other stuff there, so let's see if we can't put that on a track to be taken care of sooner rather than later. And the other item I have is, it seems to me that it's time that the council start, uh, considering how we're going to be reopening some of the facilities and reinstating some of the services, now that it appears we're on a track to have COVID under control, so I would like staff to bring back a presentation for us on that. Thank you.
Thank you. This is our motion to go into an executive session. I have a motion from my Councilwoman Dahm, a second by Councilwoman Malnar. All in favor, vote aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.